Everybody ready?
And the lady's here for the Constitution?
Yes, she is. This is my name. I would like to call the order of city council regular meeting of the city council, Satellite Beach, September 19th, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join Councilman Ozma for a moment of silence?
Rise for a moment of silence, please.
One moment, please. We have a special guest to do the pledge.
We have a special guest that helped us lead us in the pledge tonight. This is perfect, right there, and right there's the pledge. Just face that way. And go ahead and start.
(inaudible) to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. This time, we have a few proclamations. Mark, would you mind starting, please, with the Constitution? Thank you.
(inaudible) good to see you guys here again. Thank you for coming. We have a Constitution proclamation that we'd like to read and present to you. Okay, this is on Constitution week. Whereas our founding fathers honor these people's blessings of liberty for themselves and for their prosperity and for their prosperity and general aim, and we can establish the Constitution of the United States of America. Can, whereas the greatest people, and also since fully understanding the provisions the Constitution contains in the Constitution in order to support it, protect it, and defend it against the enemy. And the 231st anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and all the achievements of our founders and reflect on the rights and privileges of citizens as well as the ultimate responsibility. And whereas the independence guarantee of the American people by the Constitution should be celebrated September 17th through the 2018 as designated by the proclamation of the President of the United States of America and of its public law, 9/15. And whereas the rule of service chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution encourages citizens of Satellite Beach to read the Constitution and get to know the aspects of the Constitution. Now, on behalf of the mayor of Satellite Beach, Mr. Frank Cutino, he does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 2018 as Constitution week. Thank you. At least you have anything you might add?
Well, I mainly recognize that we have such a constitution that we do that every year.
And just to add, you guys are always here every year, and we certainly appreciate having you, and we thank you for being here. Give you a round of applause.
Great. Dominic?
Please. This is a proclamation that we are doing for Janet Petro. She works for NASA. And Janet was inducted, or will be inducted, soon into the Women's Hall, the Florida Women's Hall of Fame. One of two citizens from Satellite Beach to be inducted into the Wall of Fame in Tallahassee. So this proclamation is basically honoring you for the accomplishments that you've had in not only your career, but being a Satellite Beach product, and still living local, and doing great things for our country and your position with NASA. So this is an official proclamation of the city of Satellite Beach, Florida, whereas the Florida Women's Hall of Fame honors outstanding women who have broken down barriers and had meaningful impact on the advancement of women and the state of Florida. This month, Janet Petro is one of only three women to be inducted into the Florida Women's Hall of Fame in 2018, reflecting great honor upon NASA and our hometown of Satellite Beach. And whereas, while attending Delora and Satellite High School, Janet was one of our city's early softball stars, and excelled in cheerleading, physical fitness, music, choir, and national and school band, German language, charitable activities, and the National Honor Society scholastic achievement. And whereas Janet went on to enter the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, and only the second class of cadets to admit women, graduating in 1981 with a Bachelor of Science in Engineering. During the next five years, she served as an Army helicopter pilot and maintenance test pilot in West Germany, obtaining a rank of captain. She also earned a Master's of Science in Business Administration from Boston University's Metropolitan College. And whereas Janet began her civilian career in management positions at Science Application International Corporation, McDonnell Douglas Aerospace Corporation. Since April of 2007, Janet has served our state and the nation as Deputy Director of NASA's Kennedy Space Center, overseeing KSC missions, resources, and facilities. Since the space shuttle program ended in 2011, Janet played a critical role in transitioning KSC from a government-centered launch facility into the nation's premier multi-use spaceport for government and commercial launches, ensuing that NASA's existing capabilities and resources are also available to commercial partners. Now, therefore, on behalf of Frank Cutino, Mayor of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, we do hereby recognize Janet Petro for her pioneering work for our state, our nation, and her induction into the Florida Women's Hall of Fame, and witness whereof. This has been signed by our mayor, and this seal of the city of Satellite Beach is going to fix this 19th day of September, 2019. Congratulations. You're our hometown hero. I also want to mention that Janet's mom, Betty, is here, and her son, Andrew. And I believe that probably is Caleb sitting there next to you.
Yeah.
All right, good deal.
So I guess what I would like to say is, I'm a product of this community, and I think you're going to talk about Scotty Culp next, who was, you mentioned, was inducted in the Hall of Fame. And I think it's pretty awesome that in the entire, this big, big state of Florida that we have, that two women from this small beachy, beachside community on the east coast of Florida had two women inducted into the Hall of Fame. So my thanks is to the community, because without the community, I don't think I would be the person that I am today. And Scotty was a role model for me. I think everybody in my generation who went to Satellite High School and junior high school knew Scotty, remembered. She left a really great legacy. She was iconic as a founding member of Satellite Beach. And I'll also say, I'll be eternally grateful to my mother, who moved down here with my father in 1962. They could have lived anywhere, and thankfully, they chose Satellite Beach, which was just starting up, and to grow up in this wonderful community. And my son, Andrew, chiropractor, his wife Tiffany, who couldn't make it tonight, is a teacher at Surfside Elementary. Again, they could have chosen a whole bunch of different places to live, but he said he loved growing up here, as I did, living in this safe community. We had, I had an idyllic childhood, all the activities you mentioned that I participated in. His, Andrew and his son Caleb there will also get to enjoy the benefits of a community. So I thank all of you guys for making our community what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Want to get a picture of the family?
Yeah. Why don't you bring your family along? Can you do a picture with them? Citizens.
They do it. I'll make it out of the way.
Yeah. We have one more, and what I think we'll do, if it's okay with counsel, let's go to citizens' comments. Janet will be here, and we'll come back and do Scotty's when her son gets here. Okay, for counsel? Okay, thank you. At this time, open up the floor for citizens' comments. This will be on non-agenda items. And I will take citizens of Satellite Beach first, and then non-residents, please state your name and where you live. Floor is open. Non-agenda items.
Yom Kippur is tonight yet, and we should remember what it relates to. My name is Ron Dragoudis. I live in Satellite Beach. First comment is, what happened on Monday in regards to having a closed meeting? I thought we were Mayberry. I thought we had things open. Obviously not. Based on what the paper reported, Florida Today, I don't know if it's 100% accurate or not, but there was a rotation of members of the council, and I saw the comment that it would be more professional. I don't recall any town hall meeting, any area, where people would become unprofessional. Now, what I'm trying to say here is, the meeting should have been held in such a way that to allow people to be there, but it could have been stated that there are no comments, and we are letting you in here for public sunshine. And that's all I'm going to comment about that. I think the spirit of it should be taken, especially when I hear about the first person getting a proclamation and an understanding of what the Constitution talks about. I think that's very clear and poignant, what happened there. So my next subject is, I'm going to deviate from that. I would like to know, over the last two years, how much property the city of Satellite Beach has bought?
You can do a public records request through?
I'm asking the council right now.
Right, and my comment to you, back on it, since this is your comment to us, is to get that accurate. My recommendation is do a public records request through?
Well, I would think that city council or the city manager could respond to that and give me a round number. This worries me, since there's an agenda item now, that we don't have that figure in hand. I'll accept that, and I'll do a public records request on that. All right, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Then, I also ask for a resolution that should be formatted by the city council, or our staff, rather than not the city council, but our staff, or I will propose one, that every meeting, whether it be any board, should have a process, number one, where they don't meet for six, seven months, and the minutes are not presented, finalized, and approved. There are meetings that maybe have happened every third or fourth quarter. There needs to be a resolution to have a meeting afterwards to approve those minutes. Whether they have another meeting for other than that, they need to be approved. Secondly, I ask for another resolution, and if it takes the citizens to draw it up, I will request that every board meeting not only be recorded electronically, but it should, based on the capacity of the city, Mr. Mayor, we should have the capability of it being posted, just like the city council meeting on YouTube. And that should be in place, so citizens can look at it. That's very important. And we would have something there that, because we're living in an electronic age, that's very important. And if it's going to take citizens to bring it up, then we will do that. Thirdly, it, thirdly, I'm going to leave alone for now. But I think that's very important to recognize. And in fact, some of the things that I asked for, in fact, for the YouTube, it is very important for people to see what goes on. But on, for Monday, I don't know, maybe I'm very sensitive, but we could handle it a different way, amongst other things, in this community, and make it better. Thank you.
Podium's still open for citizens.
Good evening, counsel. Dale Abrams, Ocean Street. I live in the CRA. I'm also going to talk about Monday, September 17th, 2018. At 8:00 in the morning, I went to the city website. I was looking for something else. And I spend a lot of time on that website, and it keeps evolving, and there's a lot of good information on it. And it said that there was going to be a city council workshop pertaining to the PFOA, PFOSSs, okay? So I went out and did some things, and I came back, and about 10:00, 10:30, I looked at the website again, and I want to point out that this workshop meeting was posted 9/17/18. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, is with any meetings, I thought that there was a 24, 48-hour timeframe notice to the public, okay? So at about 10:00, 10:30, I go back to the city website, and this is also posted 9/17/18, and it says that, "City Council Cancellation Notice," and it said that the workshop meeting has been canceled, okay? All right? So then I come over here, because I had this weird feeling that something was happening. And here's this meeting that's taking place, and it's closed to the public. Now, the question is, why didn't you put that on the notice on the city website that it was closed, okay? And you were turning away people. You had a whole group of people here from various government entities, along with the gentleman from Eric Brockovich's organization. You know, my question is, sunshine, ethics, you know, I've contacted some entities in the last couple of days, and I'm still doing research on it. And, you know, I know that you all are trying to have transparency, but apparently, it wasn't there on Monday, as far as I could see. So I hope going forward, that there will be an effort to continue on with the transparency and accountability, as far as that's concerned. And then, the other question I have is, there's been some discussion about a proposal for a hurricane tax, an assessment onto our properties. I don't know if that's factual or not, because I know that we've had an issue with receiving money from FEMA. You're shaking your head, no?
No, there is not a tax.
Counselman Montanaro? Okay.
Director Chair, no, there is not a tax being put on as a hurricane tax.
How about an assessment?
No.
Okay, all right. That's about all I have to say. I mean, I could say a lot of other things that are going on in the city that maybe the citizens are not aware of, but I think I'll keep quiet now. Thank you.
Floor's still open for citizens? All citizens of the city of Satellite Beach? Okay, open up now podium for non-citizens.
I lost them. My name is Sandra Sullivan, and I live in South Patrick Shores. And I was aware of the meeting on Monday. I was invited by Mr. Robert Bochok. And I was actually messaging with one of your commissioners, Mindy. So my name is Sandra Sullivan, and I'm from South Patrick Shores. And I was invited to the meeting on Monday, on the workshop, by Mr. Robert Bochok. And the reason I was invited was because I have a half an acre of property that we determined has a great deal of military debris on it. Some areas are as much as 30 feet long, and there's another one that's 26 feet long. It's very concerning, because it's a half an acre worth of debris. And I understand that that was talked about in the meeting, in getting the entities involved to inform them and get, figure out how to tackle that problem. So I have been very involved in the community in, with, as well with Aaron Brockovich's site, in getting them involved, as well as other local people. And I was online, on messaging Mindy Gibson, and she indicated that there would be full transparency with the media here, recording the meeting. And yet, as I sat outside after I was refused entry to the meeting, yourself, the mayor, stated that no audio was allowed to the reporters that were entering, that they were not allowed to record audio. So that was not transparency. And so it's not just that the meeting was closed, it was that there was no transparency with recording the meeting, so that other people could see it, and know the information, and have that communication from the city. So that's very concerning. Also, in sitting outside as people came and were refused entry, I recorded a video of yourself talking to people refusing entry, saying that you were intentionally circumventing sunshine law by rotating yourself out specifically at 12:30 PM, and having Mindy Gibson come in. And so I just want this to be on the record, that these events took place, and it's very concerning to the community at large. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'll answer the thing about the recording. The recording was allowed. We just didn't want the video and all the cameras set up from the press. We were trying to run this in a very, there's no discussion, professional way. As the sunshine law goes, that's why each of the council took approximately a half-hour session, and stayed in the meeting, and left. My half-hour session was lunch, and telling people that I was leaving because the next council person was coming in. So we wouldn't be in the room at the same time. And we made very sure of that in this meeting, that there would not be two council people in that meeting. And we have many meetings in the city that goes on with engineers and so forth, that are just not open to a public hearing. And I was very much told that at 9:30, Florida Health Connection met with the people, Bob, concerning the water, and yet they were already met with. So this was not an open meeting. Many officials from the county, Patrick Air Force Base and so forth, were at these meetings. And it was basically a discussion with Bob to show him what we were doing, and so we could all be on the same page. And the same pages, we all want clean water and a clean environment, and that's what we were doing. There was nothing done there out of the sunshine. So the answer there. The public, a comment for non-citizens, the podium is open. I'll take citizens again. I will not allow citizens not to speak. Is there any, let me just do this, is there any non-citizens that would like to speak? Please.
Good evening, counsel. Joanne Rieken, city resident. I would like to say how much I appreciate what you are doing to get to the cold science of what's going on. There's a lot of hysteria that I feel is building, and people are acting out without having the science and the true measurements of what it is we're dealing with. Thank you for tapping it down, keeping things on an even, rational level, letting people know that you're engaged, and you're taking care of what needs to be looked at. You're running tests, and you're doing it in a very measured and reasonable way. I feel that you're not shirking any kind of responsibility as council members and mayor and the city council member and staff. Thank you for doing all that you're doing, and keep doing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Podium's still open? Please.
Scott Hoffman, 655 Cinnamon Court. And let me echo what she said. I'm very proud of what you guys have done. I think you're doing a terrific job. I think this is a wild goose chase. There are lots of National Institute of Health studies, there's 24 exactly, that state that there is no definitive causal relationship between firefighting chemicals and any immunodiseases or cancers. I feel really bad for the people that have cancer. Cancer has affected my family terribly. I volunteer every week with a cancer survivor group, and the key word is survivor, not victim. I'm sorry for these people, and I know that when you get cancer, you ask, "Why me? Why did it happen to me?" But I also don't appreciate that they use the media to besmirch this wonderful city, and to malign us, and I think it's going to get to the point where they start affecting property values. And if that's case, then I think the city should take legal action. There is no definitive link to the chemicals that they're testing for that came from the Air Force Base. There are numerous studies that show those chemicals are present in Lake Kissimmee, in Merritt Island, all over Florida, all over South Carolina, in alligators, in reptiles, and in fish. It's a very prevalent chemical, and if you don't want it, then you have to wear cotton. You can't have any furniture, you can't have any carpeting, you can't drive a car, you can't have cleaning fluids. There's a whole list of things you can't have. It's prevalent everywhere in society, and it's not just Satellite Beach. And if it were a water problem, our water has come from Lake Washington since the 1950s. If this so-called cancer cluster were caused by contaminated water, it would be prevalent in all of Brevard County, not just Satellite Beach. And I think it's unfair that they're picking on Satellite Beach, that they're singling this out, and I appreciate your efforts to try and put a reasonable thing on this. I have a favorite statistic. 96% of people who died ate carrots the week before they died. Therefore, carrots are deadly. So don't eat carrots, please. They'll kill you.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more public comment, or citizens' comments, excuse me? Here are none. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I'll close the citizens' comments. We have one more proclamation. Now Janet, I know the Army was always on time. I'm not sure about the Marines, but... Sorry.
This is Ronnie Culp. This is Scotty Culp's son. So I'm going to read an official proclamation, because, you know, you probably should have done this before, but when you introduced me to Janet, and you told me that she was going up next, then I thought, we never, we got to do something for her, but we didn't do anything for your mom.
Very nice of you.
So I went to Courtney, and I went to the, and the mayor, and our council thought that this was long overdue, so here we are. This is an official proclamation of the city of Satellite Beach. Whereas... Whereas Scotty Culp began her life, lifetime of service to our country and community in 1942, when she responded to the bombing of Pearl Harbor by enlisting as one of the first seven waves in the U.S. Naval Reserve. Signed as a parachute rigger, she began challenging U.S. Navy policy. Not your mom. I can't believe that. Prohibiting women from earning jumpwings. Her persistence paid off in August of 1944, when she became the first U.S. Navy woman permitted to complete a 2,000-foot free-fall parachute jump from an R-4D personal transport plane. And whereas in 1959, at the suggestion of Percy Hitchcock, Scotty Culp moved with her husband and twin sons to Satellite Beach, where she spent the next 53 years serving her community by volunteering the equivalent of more than 37 years of full-time work. And whereas volunteering over 47,000 hours at Satellite High School and over 30,000 hours to her city, Scotty Culp led landscaping, beautification, recycling projects, raising over $100,000 for these improvements, while mentoring National Honor Society students and juvenile offenders to instill a sense of service, community conservation, and patriotism. She also initiated and coordinated programs for Surfside Elementary, school crossing guards, Pelican Beach Park Rangers, and Satellite Beach City Hall annual 21-day salute to the flag. Contributed for many years to the city's beachcaster and served as the city's official photographer for over 40 years. And whereas, since the 1980s, Scotty Culp has been honored with awards from the Florida Today, Orlando Channel 6, the South Beach J.C.'s, the Exchange Club, Brevard County School District, and the County Commission, and the city of Satellite Beach, which by the way, has named our municipal complex here, the Scotty Culp Municipal Complex in our honor, and the state of Florida. Never once to quit or slow down, Scotty Culp, at the age of 75, was selected by the U.S. Olympic Committee in 1996 to run the Olympic torch along Highway A1A through Satellite Beach. And it's out there in a case, in the lobby, where you can look at that torch. And whereas the city of Satellite Beach nominated Scotty Culp for the Florida Women's Hall of Fame in recognition of the significant humanitarian impact her volunteerism had on our local community. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Frank P. Catino, Mayor of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize Scotty Culp for the honor bestowed by the state of Florida for her lifetime of volunteer service to her community, culminating in her induction into the Florida Women's Hall of Fame. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. First, I'll say to the city of Satellite Beach, don't ever call me Little Ronnie again. But, Mark would never do that. Thank you very much for this honor. I can't, every day I'd love to have somebody recognize my mom one more time and say something more about her. She's been gone five years, but she obviously still has a lasting legacy here in this city. And I know most of you all knew her, and it's great. But, let me say this too, and Don, thank you, I know you were instrumental. But, the Hall of Fame for women in Florida is quite an honor. And for those of you who have never heard of it, like I never did until last year, it's kind of interesting because there's a little bit of a political bias that goes on with some of that. And it was such an honor for my mom to be selected as a straight volunteer. She was never a city employee, she was never with the state legislature, she didn't get hired by the state of Florida. Everything she earned because she volunteered for her city. But how amazing it is that two ladies that originated from Satellite Beach would be back-to-back inductees. And that in itself is remarkable. Janet Petro and the Petro family are longtime residents here, and hello, Mrs. Petro, so nice to see you after all these years. I played Little League baseball at Olson Field, and my coach was Janet Petro's father. And I played with her two brothers. And he left such a legacy with all of us, besides some sailor language that I'd never forget. But still, made such a mark on us. And to think, his daughter has made her way through the milestones of success and earned it herself, nothing political about it. So I want to make sure that's understood too. But back-to-back ladies from Satellite Beach, how amazing is that? It's such an honor for my mom to be recognized, but Janet, for you to follow in her footsteps, I think is pretty amazing too. So, cities, thank you very much, I appreciate it. See you all tomorrow night.
Thank you, Dominic. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5, city council comments.
The only thing I'd say is that, you know, I went to Ethan's beach cleanup. And it's still really great, see how many people show up at. And I got there probably within 20 minutes after it started, and all of the buckets had already been handed out, all the pickers have been handed out. It was all done, basically what they did is they handed me a Walmart bag and said, "This is the best we can do for now, can you take that?" And my wife went out and did that. But it was really great to see the groups there that are still coming there after all these years going out beach cleanup, which is really nice to see.
Thank you. Mark?
Just a couple of comments. Number one, intended to Space Coast League of Cities meeting, it was a good meeting. And I just wanted to follow up a little bit with some of the comments that you made, Scott. This has been a long process, and I know it's put our city manager and all of us through quite a bit of turmoil, but the comments that you made were spot-on, I will have to say that. The things that, to me, I was thinking about this earlier today, that came out of this that are good, is one of the things you mentioned is our water is fine. And I think that was a really important thing for everybody to know, is that our drinking water is fine. The one thing that you didn't hit on is, you know, the DOH announced this week that we don't have any cancer clusters in this particular area. It reflects back to the study that was done in the 90s that said this, pretty much the same thing. So I think in that aspect, this, the work that our city manager and our city has done has kind of reaffirmed that study, that 20 years later, we're still pretty much where we were. Yeah. So I think the process has been good. The thing I'd like to add to what you said though, is that the city, months ago, started down the process of looking at the lagoon. And I think that's where some of the problems need to be focused on, we need to really begin to look at that lagoon, because that affects all of us. I mean, our council's been very proactive with that, and our mayor is actually, I think you're the chair of the committee, are you not?
Yes.
So we're very forward-thinking, and we've had an opportunity to partner with a lot of different people, from the school board, to Patrick Air Force Base, to the county, to the DOH. So it's been a good process. In my mind, it's over, it's gone as far as it can go. We've circled the field for the last, from the last 20 years, I think it's as far as it's going to go. But I think we're in the right direction. I'm just tickled pink that there is no cancer cluster, that was, that was the biggest issue that people reported in the early stages. What you made regarding PFOA and PFOS is also correct too, regarding those chemicals. There's not any definitive studies on those yet, from what I have researched anyhow. So I think, I think there's good comments that you brought up, and just wanted to thank you for mentioning those. Those are kind of on my agenda for tonight as well, so thank you, sir. That's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mindy?
Well, on a other side note, there was an electric car, we read a proclamation at the last council meeting, where we had Electric Car Club have the weekend over at the David Schechter Center. And so I went up there and I got to read the proclamation there in front of all of the electric cars over there. And if you guys are, I love cars, I'm a car dork, my dad, the time I used to spend with my father, is my best, most favorite memories with him, were working on cars. And I like to drive fast cars, which is why I have a radar detector. Sorry, chief. So it was, we have the largest group of electric car guys and gals in the state. And they come into our parking lot at our city, which is awesome, that there are many out there that want to say we're bad people, or they don't like our city, and I think it's pretty cool. And in case you didn't know, the Porsche Panamera is now in a hybrid, because, you know, I'm going to own one, I can't afford it. Goes very fast and charges when you're not moving and uses friction, so pretty cool science. I also did rotate in through that Monday meeting, and I would like to comment, only having been on council for two years. And the things that I have witnessed of our residents have, I think we have the best community ever. And I think that we have a lot of really good people. I think there are a few non-residents and residents that, you know, still love our community, but still want to give us a hard time, which is fine. You know, we need to be kept in check. And I think that's okay, as long as it's done in good taste, and that it's not done poorly. And I think most of the time, it's pretty good. I'm proud of where I live, I'm proud of the behaviors and the actions that we have done. We have done the best that we can. None of us are water scientists, none of us are oncologists, none of us are soil scientists. And I think that we have played the hands the best that I think most council people possibly could. And so I thank all of the residents for being patient with us, and I appreciate it. And have a good night. Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Dominic?
I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on the 10th, and also last Friday, I attended Florida League of Cities Policy Committee meetings that were over in Orlando. And today, I was at the community leaders' meeting that Bobby Pruitt had at Satellite High School. And it was by far the largest group of people that has ever been at one of those meetings. And it was a great meeting because so many great ideas came out of it. He shares what's going on up at Satellite High School, lets us know what's going on. We share with him different things that we can do to help some of the kids there that need volunteer hours, you know, for school, for scholarships and things like that. So it was a great meeting. I was working on Monday, so I wasn't here on Monday. But I want to share some things with you, because when this issue first came to light, Courtney called every one of us and said, "I'd like to spend $9,000 to drill three wells." We hit the ground running, feet-first, and we haven't stopped since then. We have been doing everything that we needed to do as a city to address this issue. And the issue is not just in our city. The people that live in the unincorporated area of Satellite Beach, we are not your representatives. We, we don't receive tax money from you. You pay your taxes to Brevard County. They are your elected people. Brevard County Commission is where you should be sharing your issues. If you've got stuff buried in your yard, you should be going to the county commission, because you're not in the city of Satellite Beach. We can't help you. We are doing everything that we can do to satisfy our residents and to satisfy our community, that we are doing our due diligence. If you have issues in your area that are not in our city, I suggest you go to the county commission. They are your elected representatives. We are not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also today attended the gathering at Satellite High School, put on by the principal Bobby Pruitt. And Bobby is another homegrown Satellite Beecher. He was the principal at Delora the last few years. And the amazing thing with Bobby, I've spent quite a lot of time with him since he's been appointed to the principal, is he's very much engaged in the community. I think, over the years, I've known most of the principals at Satellite and Delora. And Bobby's a pretty amazing guy. He is really connecting the cities, he's taken down boundaries, there's really, in his mind, no difference between Indian Harbor, Satellite, and all the kids there, because they're all the kids that go to our schools. And I think we're going to find that, we're going to have opportunities to work together on many things, athletic fields and so forth. And hours, for, we were talking today about community service hours, and all the kids that are available, and those hours that could help at the school, the rec, being tutors to the PAL program. So I'm really happy to see Bobby there, and I think he's going to really do an incredible job there. So he holds these meetings before at Delora, he brought that on to Satellite, and very good meeting today. Okay, any other comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to city attorney, report?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take the action item, I'm going to add to your report, to my report first, since we've kind of been on that subject. I wanted to read to you the response that I sent to Mr. Robert Bochak, who's with Erin Brockovich's team, after the Facebook post they put on our city, about our city, which actually wasn't in our city. There's a general, I guess, conclusion that because the Satellite Beach larger area, which some people include the incorporated area, because people just think it's Satellite Beach, that that's okay for people to come and expect us to deal with it. And I can pretty much assure that most people who pay taxes in the city of Satellite Beach don't appreciate us spending their money in other areas outside of the city of Satellite Beach. So if we don't have jurisdiction in the community, we really can't do anything without the county's permission and cooperation, which we did get their permission to test outside of the city that one particular time. And in exchange, they tested the monitoring wells that they have in our city. So I'm going to read this to you real quick. It's an email that has a lot of attachments, so you'll hear me talk about attached when it's attached. "Please see the attached letter specifically addressing the Facebook post we discussed yesterday. Regarding the PFOS and PFOA testing, as I stated on our phone call, we began testing when the March 2018 DOD report came out, showing numerous sites on Patrick Air Force Base as being contaminated with these chemicals. You will see from the following video link that the city immediately began looking for the labs to test for these chemicals, as we were concerned that these compounds could be in our water. Parts of this video, as well as others, were used to create a heavily edited video you reviewed and upon which you reacted. In many of the sections of the video, the staff members were describing why we needed to take precautions in water sampling, why we decided to dig three new monitoring wells, and why we were looking at other sources, since the wells furthest from Patrick Air Force Base came back almost double than the values of the well closest to Patrick Air Force Base. In no way have we ever diminished the importance of addressing this issue, and simply saying that these compounds are in other household items should not be construed as such. The results of the testing are attached here. At the time we announced the testing, which was very much covered by our local media, with very in-depth coverage by Florida Today's environmental reporter, Jim Weymer, the city of Cocoa Beach also became concerned, and they are located on the north side of Patrick Air Force Base, and these results are here. Shortly thereafter, Brevard Public Schools, school board member Tina Deskovich, also a Satellite High School graduate and cancer survivor, decided to get the water coming out of the tap at several beachside schools tested for the same chemicals. These results are attached. And again, honor about the same time, Brevard County called me to determine how they could help. They initiated testing on some wells in the south area of Satellite Beach that they installed for the Indian River Laguardia monitoring. These results are significant, since these are rather far from Patrick Air Force Base and still tested positive for PFOS compounds. These results are attached. All of this occurred within two months. Our city bypassed normal bidding and budgeting approval procedures to get these results to the community as fast as possible. Obviously, other agencies did the same fast-tracking. All of us participated in a meeting with Patrick Air Force Base to discuss these results and to obtain their data, which is also on our website. All of us participated in a meeting with the Health Department to discuss Dr. Greenwald's request for an investigation, also including Patrick Air Force Base, which resulted them in moving forward with analyzing cancer cases' data and comparing our ZIP code data with another ZIP code. We are waiting on these results. An email describing this analysis is attached. Throughout these discussions, it became clear that the lack of state federal standards for these chemicals, as well as site cleanup funds on the DOD level, are a significant problem. And until these issues are resolved, our communities are in a holding pattern, just dealing with the fallout. As such, we drafted the attached resolution for our council's approval, which will be heard at their September 5, 2018 meeting. This resolution has been reviewed by the cities of Cocoa Beach, Satellite Beach, Brevard County Public Schools, and Brevard County. While this resolution is specific to the city, the other local governments will be passing a similar resolution, worded to pertain to the respective governments. Public schools will be hearing their resolution on September 6. As we discussed on the phone, the city is testing at least eight new locations for additional pollutants. We plan on adding some soil testing in the future, specifically where the groundwater results lead us in that direction. And we are collaborating on this with Brevard County. I have requested that my staff review our police reports to determine if we have ever received any reports from residents regarding debris being dug up in the ground. I have requested that Brevard County also look into their records. Brevard County says that, quote, "From the county, neither solid waste nor natural resources, environmental remediation, and compliance have any record of complaints being received regarding hazardous materials in the areas you've cited. If complaints like that were received, they would be referred to State Watch, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection would be the lead investigative agency," unquote. Our police chief says the following, quote, "Per your request, we searched the last three years for anything that might resemble anything suspicious being found dug up in Satellite Beach. We researched multiple ways and found nothing at all. I also checked with several officers who have been here for 20-plus years, and none of them ever recall seeing or hearing anything like what you were looking for. I personally have lived here for almost four..." I personally have lived here for almost 40 years and worked here for 32 years and don't ever recall hearing about or knowing anyone who has had such a discovery or experience in Satellite Beach. I'm sorry I couldn't be any more help," unquote. I have to say that I have worked as a city manager for city of Satellite Beach for five years, and I have never received a report that I was made aware of since I have been here. As a resident of Satellite Beach since high school, I can say with complete honesty, I've not actually seen with my own eyes any debris like what you have described in your Facebook post dug from yards. I have, however, heard many stories about it. If these stories are true, we will need our residents, or we will need to do some education of our residents to actually report these items so we know about them and can document them and possibly test them for pollutants. While I have seen a map that was developed by someone showing areas of debris, no local government officials have ever been able to verify that data, and we are not aware of the sources. In the 1990s, this issue was investigated by the Department of Health, which included water and soil testing, and this report is attached. It goes on to say that we talk and, you know, we discuss a lot about how we have been working together with the other agencies and so on. And I want to make sure that people understand that when we arranged for meetings with the Health Department, the city of Satellite Beach arranged those meetings. When we arranged meetings with Patrick Air Force Base, the city of Satellite Beach arranged those meetings. When we created that resolution, we just recently passed, my staff wrote that resolution, I edited it, the county edited after that, so we were the lead group that took on that resolution. People actually came to this meeting and spoke against it. They spoke against it. It was never posted to the Hope and Health for Tomorrow Facebook page, but what was posted was when Brevard Public Schools posted, they posted an article about when they passed it, and people thought it was great. So I think what I would like to do is, while I was contemplating asking you for a budget for a special edition Beachcaster for our residents, to be able to put together everything that we have done, all of the factual information behind our efforts. And even though the state Department of Health has come back and said that there is no cancer cluster, I have to agree with Mr. Bohcock that you'll never be able to define a cancer cluster. And we understand that, but we do also understand that our residents are concerned, and we have done a public records request with the Department of Health to get Dr. Greenwald the data that she wants to look at. So we have gone beyond what most cities would do in this situation. So we are working towards those ends. When we had the meeting on Monday, we have had so many, we have a Facebook page that is being managed by someone who does not live in our community and has locked out the city manager and all of the city council members. So with that, I think it's important that we work to get some of this stuff out to our community residents. You know, I also want to comment that that meeting was never, the meeting that was done at 9:30 with Mr. Bohcock and some of the residents, that meeting was never publicized either. So there was no other opportunity for other residents to attend their meeting. I don't think the press knew about that meeting. In the meeting that we had, there was press in here. We admitted them for transparency, but what we wanted to do is keep a professional meeting that eliminated spliced videos of public officials trying to discuss solutions and work together. And that's the purpose of the meeting, was to solve problems. It was not a source of entertainment, and we were not there to raise people's profile on Facebook. So with that, I would like, I was contemplating with the Facebook, or with the Beachcaster, I wanted to let you know that since that meeting, I've had so many people contact me telling me what a good job we've been doing. It's actually been a little overwhelming. When I drop my kids off at school, I get surrounded. When I go to Publix, people walk up to me saying, "Oh, thank you for everything you've done. We had the meeting this morning with Satellite High School." I had everyone walk up to me and tell me what a great job we're doing. I had people call me, contact me. "Are you guys okay? How's it going? I don't understand what's going on in our city, but it's not good. We're worried about you." But even so, even with that broad support, you know, I still think we need to get the word out to our community. And I know there's a lot of people who probably appreciate the information that they're not on Facebook. So with that, I think it'd be good if we just budgeted the funds to do a special edition Beachcaster and get out the right information.
Thank you. I'm all for the Beachcaster. My feeling is get the information out there. Good, bad, and different, whatever that true information is, put it out there and let people be engaged and be able to read it and see what's going on. Courtney, what is usually our Beachcaster cost you need?
It's $3,500.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to authorize the $3,500 for a special Beachcaster because this is important.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. Do I have any seconds?
Second.
A second by Councilman Gibson. Any further discussion before we open up for public comment?
Courtney, I think, as I indicated earlier and as I was following up with Mr. Hoffman's comments, I think you've done a wonderful job. And I think the word's out there, I really do. I don't, we've, I don't see any additional information and need to go out there. I really don't. I think it's out there. I think everybody knows. And I just don't, I can't support it because I think we've gone far enough. It's out there. You've done a wonderful job, and the fact that people are coming up to you and saying that, I think everybody knows, I think everybody gets it. I mean, even the people we don't think get it, get it. And I just think that the money can be spent in a different way. So for that reason, again, I applaud your success with this, but I just can't support spending the money. I just can't do it.
Well, here, I have like another side of that. So, you know, there is a lot of information out there, but a lot of people don't have all of the reports and all the data in one place. And it would be nice to actually put that out in printed format, send out all the reports, all the testing. You know, we would need to add, what I would like to see is, you know, your comments to Mr. Bohcock, everything that we've done, all the links to every test, all the data that we've received, put it into one place. If you want to look at it, look for yourself, make your own decision. You know, that to me is where I think that it would work best because clicking on a website and opening up this window, and this window, and this window, and I'm a techie, but I still want to have paper in front of me and looking at it. And I think that's where we would be best suited using the Beachcaster, not just writing a bunch of information and saying, "Well, I did this, I did this." We can actually show them in print the reports. That's just my thought.
I mean, I could split it and do a lengthy, like a two-page letter explaining what we've done and the links to all the website sections with all the, and a list of all the documents. I mean, that might be another.
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be a full-fledged Beachcaster. I think, you know, I kind of agree with Mindy. I think there's information that a lot of people don't have. And while I agree with Mark, I mean, you know, I know we've done a wonderful job because we, like I said, we've been proactive on this thing from day one. And everything that's been done by your staff has been, you know, above what many other cities would have done. But I think some type of information that goes out to our residents is going to be beneficial. It will do nothing except contradict some of the negativity that's being posted on Facebook. It's not true. And that's what the intent, we have always said we wanted to be transparent with the truth, and I think this will help us do that.
You know, if it takes two pages to do it, fine. I can see if we want to not spend the money, but I also think we've been very good with getting information out there. And a Beachcaster is a way to get it to the residents. And if it takes two pages, fine. If it takes 10 pages, fine. Whatever it is to make that effort from us as a council in the city to get the information to its residents, I think it's worth it because of the magnitude of this issue. And, you know, so I'm for doing a Beachcaster the size to be determined on the information that we need. That would be my feeling. Let me at this time open up for public comment on this action item. Florida 4, first as a normal, citizens of Satellite Beach.
John Ferguson, 135, Maple. I really think you need a Beachcaster, not a letter, a Beachcaster. If it's a two-page Beachcaster and that's all you need, that's great. It has to be 16 pages, that's what it has to be. The main point I want to make is very brief and almost flippant, but I think there's a message. It appears that we have a case here where no good deed goes unpunished. If the city had done nothing, you couldn't have been beat up any worse. And probably not as badly because how can you fight when somebody just sits there and ignores you? So, yeah, let the people know. And from talking to George here, from the beach sider, a paper document has more heft to it, if you want to put it that way, than just a website. And so you really need a paper copy, and we know that we posted on the website.
Joanne Wigan, city resident. I agree exactly with what you said, a Beachcaster, whether it takes two pages or whether it takes 10 pages, but I am tired of going on Facebook and reading misinformation, and I want to see the entire story put out there for people that don't do Facebook, or maybe don't live on the web, or don't read Florida Today. Please, let's get out the truth. Thank you.
So I agree with the two pages as well, and I think it can be succinctly written and written in a way where it sort of addresses, you know, each of the items that have been, the city's been attacked for, and then provides data. And I think that if you go beyond that, people won't read it. And I think those people that are more interested, if you provide links, they're going to have the wherewithal to go read it themselves. Unfortunately, you can make this very simple. It gets very complex very quickly, but you can summarize a lot of the reports and a lot of the data very quickly and get the message out that there really is not a, and one question I'd like to ask the people that are constantly saying that there's an issue is what is the mechanism by which these chemicals, and yes, they're present because we've had sewage leaks, because it's in the water all the time, it's in everybody's washing machine, what is the mechanism that gets into a human body? It doesn't go in through the tap water, we've proved that. It, nobody's drinking shallow wells, although all the well water that was tested was below the federal limit for drinking water. So you could drink shallow wells in the beautiful city of Satellite Beach for your entire life and still not get sick, according to the federal government. Let's got to say something. Our groundwater's safe from a PFOA, PFOS perspective. So I think those things need to be told. And I just, there's no mechanism by which it's, you're not absorbing it through the skin, it's not an airborne hazard. If it were, Rockledge would have a much bigger problem because we always have east winds. Anyway, so that's what I think.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to help if somebody wants some health writing.
Ron Jurgutis, Satellite Beach resident. I agree that there should be a Beachcaster out there. Not only the links should be included, and there also should be on the website a special page where you can access the links or as updates happen. One thing I will comment is, I know the statements may related to non-residents, but why were residents excluded from Monday night? Residents are taxpayers. Residents are taxpayers. Thank you. Residents are taxpayers. It's up the record. I understand.
Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you.
Please.
I'm Mark Michaelijek. I live over in Moncito, and I just want to say I agree, you need to put something out. A friend that's a realtor already says that people are looking elsewhere because of perceived issues. So let's go ahead and get the information out.
Peg Utac, we live in, we're residents of South Patrick Shores but have property in Satellite Beach as well. I think that's a great idea, Courtney. The thing about it, I understand your position, Mr. Breimer, but fear is spreading faster than the truth on Facebook. And including, I mean, I have a friend last night even who was shockingly just going after the council and the situation from Monday, and she's normally quite well-read when she wants to be. And the stuff she was coming out with was just ridiculous and unlike her, and there was, and she flat-out said, you know, "Nothing you say is going to change my mind." And I later called her and said that you have to know the truth. Like, this is, so it is spreading, it's out there, and unless you get in front of it on paper and at least you can say that you documented it, it's going to continue to happen. So I completely support that. I would also request, just because I know how well the Beachcaster is shared and how those of us in unincorporated, I still go to the website all the time. I read the Beachcaster when I don't get it, when my brother picks up the mail before I do from our Satellite Beach location. But if you would consider putting in links, I've been saying this for months, I don't understand why county residents are not holding their county officials accountable. It seems like Brevard County officials are getting a complete pass on this, as well as the Air Force, quite honestly. I don't see any, anything going on, holding the Air Force or the federal government accountable for what is clearly happened over in that area. So if there was any way to include like links for, this is who you need to call or email if you are in this district, that would help immensely because I know a lot of people stop because they don't know who to call. And you call the county and you're lost in a loop of phone trees and buildings and whatnot. So thank you for everything you guys have done. I think you've been completely ahead of it. Progressive has always been Satellite Beach's way, and I don't know about, you know, there is something happening, we don't know what, but I appreciate all your work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Podium still open? Here are no further, pardon me? Number?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So the truth is a very interesting thing. So you have your perspective, and other people have their perspectives. And a lot of these people who have their perspectives have done quite a lot of research. And one of the other times I stood up here, I asked you about if this was a dump, and you had told me that there was a dump, a naval station dump in the area on the north end of Pineda. So you guys already know that there was a military dump there. And in 1991, when the investigation was done, in addition to the EPA, who did a basic water test that did not test for any known contaminants at that time, and then they ascertained that Hodgins was a virus, and so it was dismissed. But it was dismissed before the conclusion of a Corps of Engineers and other entities' investigation on whether this was an old military dump. And that report by the Corps of Engineers, which is a matter of record that you can request, is available from the Corps of Engineers office in Jacksonville, where they ascertained and determined that this was an old military dump. And those documents will include what was in that dump, and there are many firsthand reports, and I'm curious to get my hands on the report from the Corps of Engineers as well, of 55-gallon drums in that dump. In addition, in other facts, in, on Patrick Air Force Base, there was, some years ago, dug up 200 barrels of chemicals that were deemed too toxic to move, and they remain there today. There's a fence around them. This is prior to the EPA doing the linings. We know a lot more today. That was post-war. These are heroes that fought for our freedom, and we're very grateful for that. But they did not know what we know today, and there are chemicals, not PFOA, PFOS, that's a separate issue. There are other contaminants that are going into the groundwater. And right now, the county officials are working very, very diligently on this issue to determine what they should test for and determine that. So the truth is more than what you say. And as far as the, there never being any reported findings, Ms. Gibson knows I have sent her articles that were published in the local paper in Florida Today. were published in the local paper in Florida Today in the past, of fuselages and mortars and different things being found. And I've also given her the name of people, there have been three bombs found in the ground at South Patrick Shores. So this is not your area, I understand that, but you chose to involve yourself in bringing the county here, Virginia Barker, and you brought the... That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to respond to that?
Please.
We are in the county. The county is one of our governments. So all the residents in the city of Satellite Beach also pay county taxes. So we get their services, too. So when we have a meeting about natural resources issues, their natural resources department is our natural resources department. So when we're talking about the city of Satellite Beach, for us to have the county with us is not unusual. In fact, it's very usual because they're... We pay for their services, too. Secondly, when no one talked about, I never said once that you may have not, that South Patrick Shores residents may have found stuff. What I gave you was a direct quote from Brevard County that said, "Nobody reported it." And a direct quote from our police chief that said, "Nobody reported it." Which means if nobody reports it, we can't respond to it. So the idea that the city and the county are just sitting around ignoring people is a false narrative. So those are the types of comments and accusations that have gone unchecked and need to be checked, because it's not correct. Brevard County is diligently looking into testing, in addition to the city diligently looking into the testing, because we're partnering together. So we're doing it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? This time, I'll bring it back to council.
I just want to say something. I have a kind of a rapport with Sandra over here, and she's a very nice person. Her intentions are good. Sometimes over messaging and texting, things get lost in translation. And she does want to work with us, but sometimes it becomes hard when there's posts and there's things that go back and forth. So I want to go and say that she did send me articles of planes being dug up. Do we all believe everything that happens in the news? My conversation with you was that we needed to have this stuff reported on record for future reference, because I lived here when those articles came out. But that doesn't really prove that they were really there. Nobody tested them. There was no study done on whether they were contaminating the land. And the whole purpose of this isn't not to discount that there's ever been anything buried there. You know what? We put a... I have chickens, and I put a fence up in my backyard. You know what I dug up in my backyard? A car battery and, like, eight piles of styrofoam. So, I mean, human beings are despicable creatures, for the most part. We're pretty filthy, okay? So that doesn't... Not to discount it. What we're trying to say, and maybe it's not being conveyed right, is not that it's not there, report it in the future so we can look into it. It's just that simple, you know? And so we know, and we have a database, and one solid place to look at, and that's just all I have to say about it.
Any further comments before... Do we already have enough?
I would love to find some money around.
Okay.
I want that force, that's a hybrid.
Councilman Breimer?
No.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. Okay, Courtney, I think you have two other action items.
Yeah, and I just need to quickly go over a couple things. On the 21st, Friday, at the DRS Center, we have... The Sustainability Board will be hosting a bike rodeo, and our Space Coast TPO has offered to help set up obstacle courses and teach bike safety to residents who attend. The event will also feature an evening bike ride to conclude, and the Police Athletic League will be hosting their family food truck night in the parking lot as well, from 5:00 to 9:00. So that should be a pretty cool event. And another great thing is that our comptroller, when Brittany came on to the city, she... In the past, we've always done what we call financial statements as an audit, but it was not what we call a Conference of Annual Financial Report. We have so many acronyms, I have to look up what acronym means. But we call it a CAFER. And that is actually what you have this year. It's the first year we ever did it, and it actually has 10 years of statistics in the CAFER. So you can actually see kind of a financial history of the city over 10 years. And she actually put all that together and created the city's first CAFER. And we got an award for that. We received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that's awarded. It's our first city's, the first CAFER, first time publishing a CAFER, and it is an honor to receive this award on its first try. And that's given by the government...
GFOA government.
So that... We're very proud of that. The second thing I wanted to mention is that Patrick Air Force Base has approved our fire emergency mutual aid response with our city. We've attached that memo. And what that means is when Patrick Air Force Base calls for assistance, there no longer will be a delay in getting approval to respond. Their senior fire officer can now make an immediate decision and get the crew rolling to support the city as well when we call. So that's a great... We've been trying to get that done for years, I have to say. Two more action items. On September 5th, City Council authorized staff to apply for an EMS grant with a 25% match. After further review, the match is 1,250 more than previously presented, from 7,440 up to 8,690, due to the granting agency not allowing us to use the trade-in value of an old monitor and defibrillator. Funding is available for this additional match out of the ALS Trust Fund. However, we would like to request City Council permission to submit for a non-matching Firehouse subs grant for the same equipment. The application and award period for this grant will be completed before the application is due for the EMS grant. If we are awarded the Firehouse sub grant, no city match will be needed. So we're asking for your permission for both.
Second. A motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Further discussion? Okay. This time, open up for public comment on this action item, which is now action item two. Here are none. Back to council. Any further?
No.
Hold on.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman... Excuse me. Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Courtney?
The next item is, on June 26, 2016, council approved three legislative priorities for the Space Coast League of Cities for the Brevard delegation, specifically protecting municipal revenues, Brevard EOC replacement, and vacation rentals. The following city legislative priorities are now presented for city consideration, and the first is home rule, Indian River Lagoon, for basically state assistance, coastal resiliency plans and actions, and that would be our coastal retreat policy that we're trying to get passed this year, and then local government control over short-term vacation rentals.
I'll make a motion to approve the priorities for the Space Coast League of Cities.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion? Let me turn around. Okay. At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item, this action item, excuse me. Here are no public comments. Back to council. Any further counsel? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes. Motion passes. Council, we've been going for hour and 20. Is everybody comfortable? Still going? Okay. We're going to request to take five. We'll recess the meeting for five minutes, come back approximately 8:25. I'd like to move the vehicle one next, and then the council. So the council meeting, approximately 8:27. At this time, with council's permission, if you mind, I'll move to item number... Agenda item nine, and then we'll go back to 10, starting from the time, okay? Open this up as a public hearing on agenda item nine. Jim?
Ordinance number 1166, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 34 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by adding a new Article IV entitled Low-Speed Vehicles, providing for definitions, providing for operation of low-speed vehicles on certain roads within the city, prohibiting operation of low-speed vehicles on certain roads within the city, providing for waiver, providing for inspection, annual licensing, and required equipment for operation of low-speed vehicles within the city, providing for registration and issuance and display of decal, providing for insurance requirements, providing parking regulations, prohibitions, providing for enforcement, providing for severability, and providing effective dates. The second reading of ordinance number 1166.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 1166. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. This is the second reading. Further discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item nine, Low-Speed Vehicles. Anybody for public comment? You okay? Okay, great. Okay, here are none. Bring it back to council.
I'm excited.
Okay.
Now I'm going to get a golf cart.
Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes. Motion passes five, nothing. Chief, thank you for your input and your guys' work on this every day.
So people could come in, when... When would be a good... Like, when would you be prepared to take people? Because, like, I can guarantee there are people waiting to come into your...
As soon as the stickers are here. Everything else is in place, but unfortunately, in order to save money, we want the five with your teammates doing it. And they're very good and they're very inexpensive, but they're not so fast. So it took a whole lot longer than we thought. We had the design set, so I don't know. We'd have to put it on Facebook or something, I guess.
I think we should, yeah.
To put it out, because...
So we'll get a date, and we'll put it on my city page, the city manager page and the police department's page, and we'll get it out tomorrow of when the golf cart crew could start coming to the police department for registration. And we'll describe the ordinance, and what you all have to bring with you and all that, okay?
I was...
We'll get that done.
I'm prepared to, if we need to, what we can do is, if people are really chopping it a bit to get it done, what we can do is, we can still check the vehicle, we can still document it, we can still inspect it, and then we can assign them a sticker number, and then send them on their way. Then, when the stickers come in, we can just call them back and say, "Stop by, pick up your sticker and affix it to your cart." But they'll still be legal, they'll still be registered, they'll still have everything done, and that will actually be in our database to be checked. The only issue will be that, 2:00 in the morning or something, and we're driving down...
They may get stopped.
Well, they might not necessarily get stopped, but it would be something that we wouldn't be able to see from a distance that, "Oh, yeah, okay, that cart's been registered." But I don't see that there's so many of them that it would be an issue.
There may be some...
No, that's okay. We're prepared.
Could you maybe get, like, a little thing given with their number on it? They could hang on, like, the...
No, no, it's going to be a sticker that's going to be affixed to the car.
Oh, I meant for, like, a temporary thing until they get the stickers in, if they're that eager? Or is it not probably worth it?
I think just making sure, the most important part is it's inspected properly and we've got the documentation that it is.
Okay.
The sticker part just makes it easy at, from a distance, or if one's doing something it's not supposed to do, and we can see the sticker, and then we can go back and find out who's supposed to be driving and things like that. But we can do that by stopping the person and getting the name. So it's... It would just be kind of a...
Transition period.
Yeah, it'd be kind of inconvenient for us for a little while, but it's not that big a deal. So if we get... If we don't get the stickers in here in a real short period of time, and people are starting to get excited to get it done, then we'll just go ahead and assign the stickers out, and then when they come in, we'll just call the people up, tell them to stop by whenever we can and put them on. That would be... I'd already kind of anticipated that once, probably 2012, I'll probably say. And the other thing that we would make sure I put on, or if you happen to talk to people, what would be much, much easier for us is for people to download the form that we have on the website. So I would have to fill it out, so when they get there, they're not... We're not standing out in the heat while they write down their name and their address, because you get the form, fill it out with everything that you can do, bring it in, and then it's just a few minutes. We'll choose, go out, check it, do it, bring it in, drive away.
Okay. So they should bring the form and payment, and you can inspect it, it takes five minutes, and basically you get a sticker and you're done.
Assuming everything's right, and, yeah, then it's very quick. They just make an appointment. I mean, we don't want just people just showing up, because somebody's out at lunch and they're all frustrated, so, but, yeah. It's just all right.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Moving on, we'll pick up agenda item eight. I'm opening up a public hearing for fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Part A, public hearing of proposed financial year 2018-19 budget.
Make a motion to approve ordinance... Oh, you've got to read it first.
Right. Jim?
Ordinance number 1164, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes by establishing operating mileage rate of 8.8212 mils for fiscal year 2018-2019, providing an effective date. That's the second reading of ordinance number 1164.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1164 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Ozmer. Discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on part B of agenda item eight. Here are none. Back to council. Any further counsel? Comments? Any additions from staff? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes. Motion passes. Brittany and staff, thank you. Great job. Appreciate it. It was really easy reading, and I know you put a lot of hard work into handling up the budget, so, thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry. See?
See, I... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Apologize, apologize.
The most important part.
Okay. Going on to agenda item eight, part C. Thank you for reminding me. Ordinance 1165. Jim?
Ordinance number 1165, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, providing an effective date. That's the second reading of ordinance number 1165.
I would also like to echo the mayor's comments. Congratulations. You guys make this so easy for us to look at and do, and I'm going to defer to you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1165.
Second.
There you go. A motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Ozmer. Further discussion? Here are none. Open it up for public comment, part C of agenda item eight. Here are no public comment. Back to council. Any further input or...
Nope.
Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 10, discuss take action on ordinance 1167. Jim?
Ordinance number 1167, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, disbanding the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, amending the city board's handbook created by Ordinance Number 1101, as amended by Ordinance Number 1137, Ordinance Number 1138, and Ordinance Number 1152, creating mission statement for and amending the duties and date and time of meetings of the beautification board, removing all provisions relating, related to the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, changing the dates and time of meetings for the recreation board, changing the dates and time of meetings of the Sampson's Island Working Board, and providing authority to substitute workdays for regular meetings of that board, providing for severability, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of Ordinance Number 1167.
Thank you. One thing also I'd like to see on this, the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board has been a great board, and they did a lot of work on it, and they've been together for a long time. And we're always looking for really good people to put on our boards. So I would like to see them getting a letter and try to, into different areas where we need some help, if they want it. I mean...
Yeah, I think Lenore's already contacting them to get their preferences.
We have one application thus far that's already in the ready.
Yeah, and I also think they've done this a long time. And I think I'd like, you know, maybe we bring them a front of council and thank them.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
So stay on it. Any other comments? Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1167 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. This time, open up for Agenda Item 10 for public comment. Here and none. Back to council. Any further counsel? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?